Since changing the name of the Eclectic Americana Friday Morning Drive Time Radio Show on January 20, 1989, to the Bushwhackers Breakfast Club, the DJs in the collective have strived to entertain and inform our listeners. airing from 6 to 9 a.m. Pacific at KCSC 881 FM in Santa Cruz, California. The Bushwhackers usually have two interviews a week, each airing for about half an hour. We're not afraid to ask questions or admit that we don't know something, and we don't mind taking deep dives or following a tangent as we get into how sausage is made, in local, county, or state politics. Our interviews are not scripted and are co-produced by myself, Dangerous Dan Orange, and Sleepy John Sandage.
On this podcast, the Bushwhackers are interviewing Chris Cohn, who's been a Santa Cruz City Council member since 1998. This interview aired on October 11, 2019. Thanks for listening and enjoy the podcast.
Let's see if I press that and that, and press this and that, and then this, and I say, "KZSC, you're on the air." Is that Chris Cohn from the City Council?
It is, Dan. How are you doing?
I'm doing just fine. You're on the Bushwhackers Breakfast Club with myself and DJ Rangle.
Hey, DJ.
So I saw in the Sentinel on Tuesday, or Wednesday, I think it was, that the censure was voted down four to three, closing that chapter, at least part of that chapter now. Obviously, it's been on the town's mind. Thirteen formal complaints, five women, three of them professional staff. Chris, what's it going to take to improve interpersonal relations here in Santa Cruz between the City Council and the professional staff within the council itself? The floor is yours.
Thank you for that question, and I do hope that we can move on from this storyful chapter. I guess, taking a step back, it is about politics. It is about folks who've had some power for probably the last 17 years, and there is a new majority on the council, and people have a hard time with that, and they had a hard time from day one. And believe it or not, they've been scheming for that whole recall, etc., since then. And I think it's about politics. It's all about politics. Councilman Glover and myself have reached out repeatedly to the mayor with olive branches, and nothing ever came of that on her part. So it was, it is a political moment, and I do have, we can move on from the censure, and actually centering the shaming and blaming thing. It has no consequence of your voting ability, or you're this town, the City Council. It is just public shaming, basically, and this was not something that was legitimate. You said thirteen charges. Yes, two were sustained, or what they call substantiated, and there was nothing there. I mean, there's a sarcastic laugh that you cannot find on the tape, or council members who were interviewed during the investigation said they thought. There was one corroboration on the part of one council member about this sarcastic laugh that I was supposedly did, and Councilman Glover had an argument over a meeting room with the famed council member who corroborated by sarcastic laughs, Councilman Meyer.
Well, okay, let me try and approach this maybe a different way, this being the Bushwhackers, okay?
Sure.
In hindsight, is there anything you would have done differently?
You always want to look at things. In hindsight, I would like the relationships on the council to see, these are working relationships. We have disagreements, fine. I have no problem with that, but folks need to reach out and meet more often. It's very difficult. I don't find the current mayor a meeting with people that she doesn't necessarily vote with. So talking to other council members, they don't meet that often with the mayor either, or if at all. So I guess I would ask for more meetings. I might have asked the city manager to intervene earlier. I'm not sure how this all spun out of, where we got to now. So yes, I regret that the situation got to where it is, and I think communication, and that's what the investigator, that was his main suggestion, that we, first of all, not accuse people publicly without talking to them beforehand and trying to resolve disputes. And he's outlined a program of mediation, and this is something we should have gone towards back in March. But it didn't happen because of both parties disagreeing.
Well, I hear you. We weren't there, we've seen it reported. I did have a listener point me towards Susie O'Hara's testimony to the City Council. It's a five-minute video. And obviously, it's emotional, somebody's been impacted, affected. It reflects on us as a city, and obviously, there's something there, there. The report did find two of those complaints were substantiated, and I'm glad to hear you stating that, because that's out there. How we go forward as a City Council, and as a City Council who works with our professional staff, is probably the thing of most concern. I know there's a recall effort out there. Everybody's mailbox is getting inundated. I'm not sure where that is, or where it goes. Probably, it's all hypothetical right now, so I don't even know if we need to talk about it. But yeah, having relationships that withstand disagreements, I agree with you there. More meetings, probably. Having the city manager intervene earlier, yes, but it also comes down to just how we treat each other. And I know it's politics, and people's blood pressure goes up, but we all need to be able to kind of take a breath, remember that the person on the other side is a human being, and try and go forward maybe with a little bit less, I don't know, less like a steamroller and more like somebody who represents a diverse community.
Good points, Dan. Point well taken, and I accept that, and I feel terrible about listening to Susie's testimony and what she's been through. The city, she was at the front lines of this issue that's bedeviling all of California, homelessness, and that Ross camp, and I know there's a lot of people on edge, and there was, I counted over 200 people living there, and it was a terrible situation. And trying to resolve that, you know, confluence numbers and working with Susie, it was heartrending. But can I just take, I just drove in my car right where I am right now, and I passed a couple of, I passed one housing project where the old bookshop Santa Cruz was, it's Swenson 79 condominiums. You know, Dan, there's not one affordable unit that's going to be for rent in that building. Then I passed, what, at Ocean and Water Street, they're proposing 333, what they call SOU, single occupancy units. These are basically one-bedroom condominiums for, I believe, tech workers from over the hill. Our town is, and then you have 555 Pacific, which the lights aren't on in most of those, a lot of those units. And I'm wondering, are they holding them back? Are they just trying to get their price? Is the building fully occupied? This is on Pacific Avenue at the end toward the wharf. We are in a growth spurt, but it's not, and we have a crisis, and it's not a housing crisis, Dan, it's an affordable housing crisis. And that's what I think the council's getting behind, and that's where you're going to see the background for a lot of this friction, because are we going to sell over Santa Cruz to developers, and we're going to get a different class of people? As one of the consultants actually said to the library subcommittee the other day, "We want a different class of people." I mean, what?
Well, let's go into this, but let's start by kind of going full disclosure. I, Dangerous Dan, am a paid research staff member of the UC Santa Cruz community. I have been paid since 1986, okay? So I have a relationship with this campus. DJ Rangle, opposite me, UC?
I worked here for 36 years.
Oh, but you're retired.
Yeah.
Okay, now, and we're talking to Chris Cohn, Santa Cruz City Council member. Chris, what's your relationship to the campus?
And I am a, I got my undergraduate degree, I got a graduate degree in education. I've been working as the internship director in the Department of Environmental Studies for the past 16 years.
Okay, so let's talk about the university.
I'd love to.
Now that all the cards on the table, and we all know our relationship, campus is growing, it has been growing, and it is projected to grow significantly. Tens of thousands of more students here in the next 10 or 20 years. I don't know how you want to slice it, but let's just say, campus is growing. As far as I can tell, there's no plans for significant new student housing, and then the question is, what is the role of the city in naming, shaming, blaming, gaming the UC system to increase the amount of housing so that students have a place to live, so that the rental housing that's out there is not so hotly competed over that the prices go through the freaking roof?
Dan, you're pointing to like the issue of our time, and housing, and you could throw in homelessness, housing, students, and homelessness, and we're finding a lot of homeless students, and there's a big push for students to live in their vehicles, and for the university to free up one of their parking lots to do that. But getting to your initial question, there's too many students, yes. I was on campus the last three days. Well, yesterday was closed. But I mean, getting elbowed in the face on the shuttle bus, the intersections are just packed. Do we go car-free? Do we have a car-free campus, and we only let emergency vehicles and truck deliveries or something? I mean, there's some ideas out there. Do we have a moratorium on students until Oakland, the UC region, provides the resources? That's where we're at right now. I serve on a committee called the Community Advisory Group, about 22 of us, different elected officials and residents, and that's where we're at. We're saying no more growth until Oakland provides the resources. And of course, historically, Oakland does not, UC region does not provide the resources until the students are already present, and that's the situation we're in right now. Students sitting on the floor in classrooms, buses passing up students because there's too many, and shuttle buses just packed. It's an untenable situation, and they want to invite 10,000 more students. And the growth of Santa Cruz has been the phenomenal growth of the university, not necessarily of the residential community.
All right. When Chris is referring to Oakland, he's referring to where the office of the president resides, of the university.
Yeah, yeah. And she's leaving now, Janet Napolitano. We just got a new chancellor, Larive, Chancellor Larive, and I feel that might be this grow, grow, grow coming at us. I don't know, and that's not where the City Council or the Board of Supervisors that I know is at. We are saying like, no, we need resources to cover what we've got now.
So we're referring to resources to build more undergraduate housing, as well as classrooms and the infrastructure, shuttle buses, etc., that you've talked about, to handle the increased student community. But the housing, if affordable housing, if we want to live in a town that our kids can afford to live in, even if they don't pull down six figures at whatever high-tech startup, whatever. So if we want to live in a town where our kids can live here, yes, we need affordable housing. That means more supply. We need to build more housing. And I see things about increasing the density along the SoCal corridor, and people going up in arms that they don't want three- and five-story buildings lining SoCal. Well, we're going to have to put housing somewhere, so how do you approach that?
Dan, I think it was five to seven stories, three stories I think a lot of people could live with, and the amount of affordable housing was minuscule that they were talking about, and they didn't include the neighborhoods. In the 14 people, not one person was from the east side. So there's a whole bunch of factors that led into the decision for the council recently to say, "Let's take a step back and not do the corridor plan as envisioned," because it just didn't work for a lot of the people. There's been two elections in the meantime as well. So I agree with you, I think we should start with what we've got. The city owns the old thrift center lot behind New Leaf Downtown. They own the NIAC building, which is next to the bus station. We own Tempecos, the old Tempecos site. Those are three housing sites that we could put, I think, 300 to 500 units of affordable housing. Let's start there.
So when you talk about the city, and you talk about the Swenson property, you talked about Ocean and Water with 333 units, you talked about 555 Pacific. How can the city mandate for affordable housing when the city approves these housing developments? Talk us through how sausage is made, because when you talk about the NIAC building in Tempecos and down across from the bus center, about getting 300 to 400 affordable units, how is sausage made? How does the city facilitate new housing going in that includes significant numbers of affordable housing? And I hear you laugh, but listen, on Bushwhackers, we do get into how sausage is made, so we actually want to know.
I really appreciate the question, Dan, and those are two different pieces, right? You have for-profit housing developed in the form of Swenson, there's another person named Doug Lay, there's another corporation named DevCon, that's your private sector housing. Right now, there's 205 units approved for the end of Pacific Avenue there, it's called 208 Laurel Street, next to the bus station, adjoining that Tempecos property. When the city wants to get together and do some affordable housing projects, they seek out affordable housing provider, that could be Mercy Housing is one, Mid Peninsula is another, there's three or four that have done work for the city. We would seek them out, they would go out and they get what's called tax credits. People who have, I guess, disposable income looking to drop money into these, whenever they do bonds, and the interest on those bonds is freed up for borrowing to do these affordable housing projects. Personally, I want to see housing integration and not segregation. So I was hoping that the 205 units that DevCon is projected to build, they have their permits, would then put in 32 units of affordable housing, because that's what the city law says, 15%. That would be 15%. The previous council negotiated with them, negotiated that away, where they didn't have to do that. Instead, they traded to the Tempecos site. So now we have the Tempecos site. I-55 Pacific, we never got our affordables there. We got a few, what they call housing authority units. Clearly, the city, if we want private developers to build affordable housing, we've got to share some of those expenses with them, and I agree. But we've got, I think, really put the foot down and say, "You have to build the affordable units along with the for-profit market rate unit." And it's just that negotiating that the city has room to do.
So typically, a developer goes in knowing that 15% of the units need to be, and I'll do my air quotes here, and everybody can see it in their mid-range and tweeter, affordable, right? Okay, so typically, 15% have to be affordable. So you're saying that DevCon traded their affordable units for the Tempecos properties, so maybe the city came out ahead there, but in every other case...
No, no, Dan, but we have to now go out and find, it could take us years to find that thing. If they included it in the DevCon project, those 32 units would be built. You're right, we might be able to get more units out of the site, but who knows when?
So basically, and when a developer negotiates with the city, is it with the City Council or is it with the city staff? How does the City Council get a say in this?
Well, this is where the sausage making is. They scope these things out, they typically would approach the economic development coordinator, her name is Bonnie Lipscomb, and then they probably would contact a bunch of council members and sit down with them and have various meetings, and it's typical, the way Tyson Chandler, for example, I think it's, no, Tyson Sales, he is the representative for the Dream Inn right now, so now I'm going over to the west side here. They want to build 89 condos across the street from the Dream Inn. There's many issues swirling around that. You have the Clearview Court people, you have those west side neighborhoods, you have people that don't want any commercial going up the hill there on West Cliff. And so this is going to come to the council, that project is coming to the council in, I guess, next month, maybe the 22nd of October is our next council meeting. He's planning on building, I believe, seven or eight low-income affordable as part of the project. City law seems to indicate that maybe he should be building, 15% is not seven or eight, I think it's around 14 or 15 or something. So I think that's some of the negotiating leverage the city has to get a little more affordable housing out of that particular project.
Okay, so what you're saying is that a developer works with the economic development coordinator, who's a full-time city staffer, but then also meets with the City Council, probably to kind of feel out what's possible, what can be done. So that's the private developer, but you're saying that the city owns all these properties, and they could be developed for affordable housing. How is that sausage made?
We have a full-time person also that works within economic development, who negotiates and seeks out deals with nonprofit housing providers. And they're working with the federal government, working with Housing and Urban Development in Washington, DC. We have these different funds, one called CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant. There's another fund, too, where we draw money on to do a whole bunch of things, not just building housing, but also improving neighborhoods and stuff, too, with that money. And so the Economic Development Group within the city, a department, puts together this stuff and brings it to the council. Sometimes we have private meetings with her, and many often, of course, it goes before the public in different ways, public meetings. The developers have public meetings with the community. I think the Dream Inn people had two or three. If a nonprofit provider was going to do a project, they would have a couple of public meetings as well to get input and find out, "Hey, is this what people want to see? Do you want to see more of this? Do you want to see more of that?" So there is a process that people usually follow. I would say the private developers follow the minimum, they check off the boxes that they're supposed to check off. I would hope the nonprofit people go the extra length and maybe have an extra meetings, and small group meetings, and big group meetings.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Did I get to your question about how the economic development works with the city?
I think I understand the for-profit side. On the nonprofit side, seeking out somebody who's got the wherewithal to do this, it sounds like something that just kind of hangs out there. It's not on the top of anybody's to-do list, because, hey, I miss Tempecos, one of the better margaritas in town. I miss Tempecos. It's been closed for a while. If the city owns that property, is something happening with that? In other words, okay, yes, I know it's a process, and it takes partners, and it takes money, but does someone get up in the morning and say, "Okay, today, I'm going to work on getting more affordable housing on city-owned property. That's my top priority."
Dan, now you're hitting on it, man. That's the difference between different councils. It's like, you keep sending that message over and over to staff. I want somebody, just what you said, waking up in the morning and going to bed at night thinking, "We've got to figure out how to get more affordable units on X, Y, and Z properties." That's exactly it. I think for too long, we've had people thinking more about commercial market rate development and just filling spaces with whatever housing, and I think that that's not what this council wants to see happen.
So our City Council, we elect, what, half of it every two years, right?
Three and four, yeah. This next election in 2020, there's four seats up.
Right, four seats up, and then in 2022, it'll be three, okay? So how do we handle bringing new members in to where we can work from kind of a functional... Well, hang on. Your term is up in November of next year, right?
That's correct. Sammy Brown, myself, and the mayor, Martine Watkins, our terms will have ended.
Are you going to run again? I mean, I know you don't have to have registered, and maybe this could be breaking news here on the Bushwhackers Breakfast Club, but we'll put you on the spot. Are you going to run again?
Yeah, lots of thinking will go into that. These next couple of months, we'll see how it unfolds, and at the end of the day, what people think. And that's why I think this whole recall thing is weird, because that's what elections are about. I'm not doing anything, I don't think, that I didn't say I was going to do policies I'm following around homeless issues, around housing, around traffic, and with respect to university growth, I'm not doing anything different. So that's why 2020 would be the time that voters would choose whether this guy's doing it or not. But I haven't made that decision yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we got about four minutes left before the KPFA Morning News comes in here. You are listening to KCSC Santa Cruz, it's the Bushwhackers Breakfast Club. We're talking to Santa Cruz City Council member, Chris Cohn. What was the discussion about district elections? I understand that nothing's going to happen. What are they, and can, a little bit more sausage here. What are district elections, and why should people know, care, or understand about these things?
Well, ultimately, I think everyone should care about being represented, and as an old political science professor of mine used to say, he used to criticize representative democracy and say, "It's like going to the gym and having someone work out for you." So what he was really saying was, representative democracy doesn't work unless people get active and get involved in issues that they're concerned about. With respect to district elections, there was a law passed in 2015 which lowered the bar significantly to assist what's called protected classes. Protected classes are African-American, Latinx, and Asians. So where those groups have not been represented fairly, and there's certainly a history of that in this country, and especially in California. So the at-large, you'd have this group at-large that would control every seat, as it does in Santa Cruz, we have an at-large system. The argument would be, can we carve out a Latinx, Asian, or African-American district that would fairly represent folks, to give them an opportunity to have a seat on the City Council, or multiple seats? From the analysis that I've seen done, I don't know if that's possible in Santa Cruz. I know the conservatives have always been pushing for district elections ever since the 70s, because they wanted to get all the students in one district and sort of not have them affect any of the other seats on the City Council. So right now, I think the positive thing of district elections would be, you'd probably pay less, or you'd have to raise less money in the campaign. You can maybe get around and get to know everybody in your district, that's the positive side. The negative side is, okay, let's put this in that person's district, because we got the votes to do that kind of thing, when nobody wants the homeless shelter. Like, oh, let's put it in that person's... So I personally, there's a lot of turf wars when you have district elections. You would think that at-large elections, people would try to work together a little more. I think there's arguments in favor on both sides. So we have a lawsuit that was approached by this group in Santa Barbara, and they go around and give you boilerplate lawsuits, they've done it in several cities. Most cities, all that I know of, have gone to district elections as a result of these lawsuits. Some stronger than others, some have fought it more than others. Our school board just went, is going to district elections now, after having been approached by these people and sued.
Well, Santa Cruz City Council member, Chris Cohn, we're going to have to come back to this, and I certainly want to, because when rent control was voted down 55, 45, or 60, 40, yet the council majority has brought it up over and over again, when clearly the public spoke against it, I think district elections speak to that, but we don't have time to talk about it today.
Dan, the governor just passed rent control and just caught, so just know that maybe the Sacramento's now leading the way.
Yeah, well, Chris, always great to have you. Bushwhackers Breakfast Club here on KCSC Santa Cruz, making sausage and talking about how it's made with our elected representatives.
Thank you very much.
We thank you for joining us. Please be good to each other there on City Council, and respectful with staff and whatnot. Let's move forward, okay? You've been listening to a podcast from an interview on the Bushwhackers Breakfast Club on KCSC 881 FM in Santa Cruz, California. This interview was co-produced by myself, Dangerous Dan Orange, and Sleepy John Sandage. Sean Specht helped get this interview into Podcast Sean Specht helped get this interview into podcast format. KZSC is a student-run college and community non-commercial educational radio station, broadcasting from the UC Santa Cruz campus. You can stream KZSC online at kzsc.org. Thanks for listening.